And welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August seventeenth. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of the flag. Thank you. We we have some more trying to get in, so. We'll before we get into the adoption of minutes, we have public comment time, so. Uh we have some folks that would like some public comments. Do you mind if we do ladies first?
Yeah.
When you started, he already was talking to Commissioner Lance. Do you want to go ahead? You go ahead.
Just introduce yourself and what from whence you came.
My name's Wayne Kaufman, North Anvil Township. And my question is, since the GLR eight is a authority. Besides the board, what restrictions do they have in spending the money? What charter do they have? My question is, so i- if somebody in the board wanted a new car, does the authority have the the right to purchase them a new car through the landfill?
That would be their judgment to uh cars needs to be replaced.
Yeah, it was their personal car.
Well, if it's personal car, they would buy it themselves.
That's what I thought. So so as an authority. What limits them to say stay within the landfill perspective like? Should I say uh building a gun range? Can they do that with the landfill money? Does landfill money that's generated from that operation have to stay with the landfill to support it? Or can they do what they want?
Well, they're subject to audit, so I I mean, they have to stay within the guidelines of 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 an audit that would be applicable or appropriate expenditures, but Jamie, if you want to.
Yeah.
Go beyond that.
Sounds like you have a whole bunch of things, so.
Oh, yeah.
Uh so they are they are an authority that was created by the county fifty, close to fifty years ago. They are autonomous, however, so they're once they're an authority, then they have the ability to do all those, all of their own things without oversight of the county. The county could theoretically disband the authority, I guess, but the purpose of them being created is for for waste management for Le- in Lebanon County. And so all of that responsibility for waste management was delegated to the authority, which is the reason it was created. But all of all of their budget, their expenditures, everything is under their roof, so everything they do is
So is their own. So if I want an addition on my house and I went to them, they said, okay, we have the money, we'll put an addition on your house.
I don't think so, right?
Well, so that there there's a good point.
I mean, if you have if you have certain accusations, you believe something's going on there that 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 you've heard or know of that isn't appropriate, then your remedy is to go to the to the authority.
That seems to fall with that fear. My problem is, there's a gun range there already.
There's.
Lebanon County Police Combat.
Right.
Know that one?
Yeah, it's not on the authority's property.
Right. Now they're gonna build another.
Yes.
If they are.
Yes.
Now, the North Anvil Township right now is going over the rules that are apply applicable to putting up gun range.
Right.
Okay. So does anybody know why this happened?
Yes, actually, the county's involved with that.
Okay, so I do you hear? Did you hear both sides or only one side of the story?
Well, our director and the Department of Emergency Services has been to the North Anvil Township meetings and has met with the township about it along with members of law enforcement.
Okay.
Uh Chief Chief Knight from North Lebanon Township, I think is one.
Met them all.
Okay.
Okay. See. What really happened is that the police were shooting back there. So they shoot cars as train. Glass all replaced and they didn't clean it up. Then also their targets they put out are about and they're they're at a level where where the targets for paper paper targets are in the road, so to speak, so they were shooting them up. And the people that run the club back there weren't happy about that. And then I guess they had a barbecue or something and almost burnt the they they said they could have burned the the ceiling down or the roof down there at the clubhouse. So they had a fight. So cops went to the landfill about building a range. Then I got involved saying, we don't need two ranges, one right next to the other. If you look on the site where they want to put it, it's right next to the other.
Yeah.
We already had, okay, I recorded that's will limit to seventy-five plus back where I live. Okay. That is unacceptable by any means. If you look up testable readings. So why would they put another gun range in just because two people can't play in the same sandbox?
I don't I don't, I mean, it's my knowledge or my.
Nobody ever.
My impression is more than two people that can't get along. I mean, I think that there's.
But Kerry's a little.
Jamie.
If I may.
Yeah, go yeah.
Yeah, okay, and that what you just stated is very inaccurate. That that had nothing.
That's what they told me.
And again, I can tell you that the it's it's, you know, it's dark outside right now. You chose to believe it. Okay, that's not that's not what occurred.
That's what told me.
That's not what occurred.
Why you?
I'm telling you, that's not what occurred.
So why?
That may have occurred, but it was not local Lebanon County law enforcement. We told you out there that one, it's hard for the police to get in to meet the requirements because they use outside companies that come in.
So so the police, even though the names.
That the state requirements that have us qualified every year, okay?
Well, how comes all these other years of this behind?
In fact, you what? Because they decided to start trying to make money out there and are allowing outside companies to come in to provide outside training. So just like we discussed before with the the resident that um had a around go down range and strike their barn, that was not local Lebanon County law enforcement. That was an outside company. A private company that they chose to contract out with, provided training. And again, we talked about that till we were we for a long time out there. But that is not accurate what you just stated today.
Well, if I had somebody here from Police Combat.
I would love for that.
You guys already discussed it and you already had a fight and it's.
There was no fight. I don't know where you're getting that. There there was no fight. They're upset because it's a local, they built themselves, it's a local police combat range, okay? However, what happens is they charge a certain amount of money for us to come on, okay? Training budgets are very tight for every municipality to provide that outside that that mandatory training that we have to provide here. Okay, so it's also hard for us to be able to work around the scheduling of that. Every officer that has to go to. To be able to to get out on that range.
Go ahead.
However, again, it's hard to get out there. So the level, the number of people shooting is still going to be the same. Whether we're on a different range or we're on that range, it's still the same amount of shooting. Your gripe, like we explained before, is not with local law enforcement, the landfill or the county. It's with the police combat range. So you should be going to their meetings and saying, hey, this is, why is this occurring?
Okay, I know how to handle that. Well, okay, I do. My here here's where I'm gonna go. The landfill paid a lawyer to draw up the lease agreements with you guys. The landfill's gonna supply the dirt and the equipment to put in this range. They paid for that dirt, they paid to pay their employees, what? So I'm saying, where does who gives the authority to build this thing, all right? Out with landfill funds?
Their their board.
Their board?
Yeah.
So their board have no restrictions?
I mean, it's. Not no, yeah, I mean, that's not. Not just anything in the world they want to do, but but that's they're they're that's the use of their land. The board is made up of a representative from every municipality in the county.
I know that.
So.
I've been there.
And they're and they're again, they're autonomous. They if if that's how they.
What they want to do, so they can put Hershey Park in back there if they want to. It's it's simple as that. I mean, they already bought houses and they're renting them out.
So the land, well, they 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 buy they buy properties for future expansion of the landfill. And while that property is not being used, they may they may maintain the residents and and a and a tenant, I suppose, on on the residence if they bought the farm or the neighborhood.
Well, they want two homes back there, Brendan Millers and also living.
And they've been doing that for decades. They they.
Yeah, but they usually tear them down.
Well, I I can't.
And I was told they proposed straighten the road out. That's why they bought them.
But they it's they're they're using the land, so so uh as they as they see fit, if they're not using it for waste uh disposal. They're just, it's just vacant land at the time, and a gun range can be flipped back to whatever they need in in time, but they may not need it for twenty years.
Okay, so.
But to answer your fundamental question, yes, they they're they're autonomous and they may spend.
They may do what they want.
Yes.
What they. So if they're baiting, so they spend four thousand dollars for tree trees. Okay. And they had their employees put trails in and blinds in to shoot the deer. Is that all part of that autonomous stuff?
If if that.
That's what I call PETA or the Game Commission.
Right.
Right?
Right. I guess so. I mean, it.
That's where I gotta go.
But it it may be, it may, and I don't know any details about what you're talking about. My. My guess is that that if they're trying to control a deer population or something, then that's part of that's part of the land management. I don't know that, though. I'm just me speculating.
You're yeah, okay, so that's what I was trying to get at here is that they're taking their money that they get, and now they're they're actually talking about raising their tipping fees. Do they need to? York and them are the only two that are the lowest. The ones in between are a lot higher, but they they might be waste management facilities. I don't know. But I'm just saying they're gonna raise their tipping fee that they ever reached into. They're spending money like drunken sailors to do that.
Wait, the the real answer is, and you can vent about all that, but the the simple answer is that's under them, not us. So that you need, that's where your remedy is.
Right, help Bobby, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Think about another analogy is the city of Lebanon is about just a water authority. Many, many years ago, that water authority has complete autonomy to sell water rights to the other municipalities and for many years provided services to help the city that they felt was in the best uh interest of the community, like helping with blowing streets and things like that. So they do have you know, they're buying cars for private citizens, that's not appropriate, you know, but.
Well, that's why, that's why.
But that's where.
This is not a. The hunting part, i- it's the money. I don't care what they do. But when you take landfill money and spend it on things like that, and they're, believe me, they're only pet projects. Skip Garner said to me, I just heard that they they you guys are gonna sign a lease, okay?
We I think we did.
Oh, you did sign the lease?
I believe we did.
Okay, well, he's gonna change it next year so he can shoot back there, because I was a guy that say he he said, you're the guy that that has it that I can't shoot back there. Oh, okay.
But you can't believe everything that everybody says.
Once it's, once it's changed.
Go buy into everything that you hear.
Well.
Thank you. One other point I wanted to make too, in my opinion, was that we've heard about this development of the gun range. You've heard of some concerns uh about it, but again uh the overwhelming uh factor in my mind was that this is needed. As the sheriff alluded to, all these municipalities are required training and have facility in our community that is exposed by and accessible to to them, you know, a little boss is is a huge value to our overall.
I it was it that's not the fight, the fights over the money that's spent, the landfill spending the money.
And that fight isn't here, though. It's there with their authority. That's their.
Well, that's falls on deaf ears.
But that's but that's where your remedy is. That's legally where your remedy is, not here. We have no.
And I I'd like to make just one point. The county is involved, but only to pass their plan. And we have to go through that and make sure that that's what our liking. So we still do take votes and uh but only on that. They do vote on everything else.
Okay, well, they will be restricted according to what I understand to a seventy decibel limit, if within a thousand yards of the property. It's about the range.
I don't know what essentially.
But that would be.
There was a lot of legwork that went into it to accommodate everyone.
They're still bashing it around yet. Well, that that may be.
That decibel level may, that would be a township where uh force restriction, yeah. Our lease doesn't address anything about about that.
Right, that's where, okay, so.
So you you I think in both cases, it's North Anvil. North Anvil has a representative on the on the Greater Lebanon Refuge Authority. We you probably know who that is, and and that person can raise concerns on the part of the township or the township's residents such as you. And then the township is also writing the rules on how the range will be will be restricted. So that's also North Anvil. So I mean, the the spending, as Commissioner Phillips said, the spending issues are with the Greater Lebanon Refuge Authority. The restrictions on a gun range or the ordinances and rules and so on, a- along with the representative to the Refuge Authority are with North Anvil.
Right.
So there's no, there's no county funding that goes through the Refuge Authority. There's no oversight. We don't appoint the board members here. Anything like that.
It just goes on the plan.
Just the plan. There's it's usually a ten-year waste management plan that the EP requires they maintain, and when they revise and rewrite that plan, it's required that the county sign on.
Well, I I was just concerned, I don't care if you put your range in, but that don't matter to me. I I what I had a promise is why you seem to.
Okay, and I think.
I know Kerry's terrible, okay?
Wayne.
I belong to the club.
I think we're, we've we've exhausted the conversation, I think, so to the best that we can, we've answered your questions and uh hope hopefully you got a clarity on where the answers lie.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you. Now, who's next? Who dare go next?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Want to go with the kids?
No, we have. We have more coming.
Okay, um, my name is Susan Wheeler. Um, I wanted to.
Are you thinking? For which township?
Uh Cornwall, actually, okay. Um, I didn't expect a comment yesterday, but I had to leave, unfortunately. Um, I was one of the original groups of uh that worked back in the early two thousands with the board. So I'm older. I wear that proudly. Um, we worked with the board. We did an amazing job. I was part of the educational community along with a professor from uh E town and also uh the head of the Mulever Botanical Society. There were several of us, and eventually um we broke ranks. We had a good working relationship because they were going to law. And our group could not support the logging agenda. We felt that it was not the proper ways to manage forests. So um we decided uh to get a second opinion, which is a good good alternative. So we went to the Natural Lands Trust, immediate president. And uh Dave Steckel actually came out and did an amazing job writing up um and I'm gonna say stewardship plan because it was not a logging plan. It involved uh selective cuts, it involved not the whole spring that's involved that I heard yesterday. And um we presented that to the board. It didn't go anywhere. So the the other alternative we had was we put it out in the press. There was a newspaper at that point. And the press was there, and we had, I think, if memory serves me right, two times when the Environmental Center was built capacity, because the public did not want their forests cold, logged out, whatever. But it it didn't do anything. They went ahead and did. So that was the end of our relationship, but the difference, and this I've been drawn back into it, I have to, is Ryan and his dynamism, his passion for the forest. His dedication and advocacy, because I feel the same way. The difference between then and now is now we're in global climate change, which has to be recognized and dealt with. So from my point of view and from all the reading I've done, the idea of going in and Dr. Becker talked about this most recent cut off one seventeen forty acres that's going to happen at some time in the future. To me, that's uh something that should be totally off the table. At the last meeting, when uh Ryan spoke, we had Mike Sherman here of the Lebanon Conservancy. He did not get a chance to talk, but there are tools that we can use, such as carbon sequestration, such as carbon credits. None of that was mentioned yesterday, which got me very upset because the forest can be put to good use. The trees, such as they are, you may not like tool of trees, you may not like spice bush, you may not like pawpaw, but this is what they do. So I think we could, and I strongly recommend, and I hope you will consider this. Uh looking at other opportunities for this before any more logging and stuff. Um, I would appreciate maybe uh going through the Natural Lands Trust again, getting a second opinion of the stewardship plan. I had hoped to have that for you present today, but they have changed their rules, and as I'm not the landowner and I don't have connections with Governor Dick, they will not come out and do it. So it would have to come from you, or it would have to come from the board. And I think Mike Sherman of the Lebanon Conservancy should be consulted. He's very knowledgeable. It's right here in town. We have all this talent that's not being used that can help us with as far as managing. And to me, before anything else is done, we need to move forward with this. And I have one more strong recommendation. Um, I was gonna mention this yesterday. Um, I think three people, three groups of people should be involved with the decision-making proc- process. I think you should be involved. I think the board should be involved, and I think Ryan, the public should have a voice. Because it was my experience way back in the early two thousands. We had parents with kids on Saturday morning doing garlic mustard. Most kids are doing soccer, or they were pulling all other kinds of invasive species. We had tremendous, we had plantings, we had butterfly gardens. I had lectures at the Environmental Center that were packed to the the capacity. This can all happen again. Public has been turned off. So we need to give the public a voice. We have to listen to what they say. So let them investigate, you investigate, let the board investigate. This is not to negate everything that Dr. Becker did. But then let's get together and let's cooperate and cooperate on some sort of forest plan down the road that just not a lot of, doesn't involve all this logging.
Thank you.
I really would hope you would consider that. I'm glad to give you my phone number. You have Ryan's contact. And there's one other thing I would like to say. There's one other thing that Dr. Becker failed to mention. Um, when I look at a faro forest, I look at the ecosystem. A healthy forest grows from the soil up. It does not, the trees have roots in the soil. Um, I don't know if any of you have been out in the woods and you dig, you see these things that look like white strings in the ground. Well, that's um microcosms fun- fungal network. It's like the organic internet. They connects all the trees in the soil. So when Dr. Becker talks about pesticide and all this abrasive uh ripping up the forest, you're doing all that fungal network which connects the hub tree, the mother tree, whatever you want to call it, to all the rest of the trees in the forest. This is something that wasn't addressed.
It it, uh Ryan did actually.
Oh, he did touch on that. Oh, and he gave you a book, didn't he? Well.
So that was, yeah, after.
Yes, and you should read it. It's like, it's mycelium. And the only reason I knew about it is because I did birds and I did plants and I do trees. And then I had a son, David, who was enamored with fungus, and all of a sudden I heard the word mycelium. And I never knew all the stuff was going under underneath the soil, all this good stuff, this connection. It's like an organic um email on organic network. So I really encourage you to think about that too, because you brought it up yesterday about the life of plant states. How long does it stay in the soil? You know, the pesticides. It's a good point, and it kills that whole network. So please give this some consideration.
Thank you. Yeah, we did allocate uh till everyone was finished yesterday, about two hours to this um discussion, so we appreciate you coming in and adding to that since you had to leave and and so on, but uh thank you for.
Well, thank you for your consideration and thank for listening. I appreciate that very much.
So I think we're out of public comment time. No, just kidding. No, just go ahead.
Sorry.
Introduce yourself and you.
Sure. My name's Tim Bend, I'm the uh Samba Trail Director, uh Governor Dick. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to piggyback off of the introductions that my name was mentioned a couple of times yesterday, and I wanted to let you know who I am. The last few years, we've accomplished a lot with board. It's not always easy, but we've done a lot of good things. We've we've uh changed two trails to be safer for hikers, to be more sustainable and uh more fun for mountain bikers by while slowing our speed down. Uh, we turned one fence trail into a multi-use trail. Really for the safety of returning visitors from the Environmental Center back to their cars at Monument Park or Monument Parking Lot. And uh I think most recently, a lot of you may know that we we changed one trail that paralleled Old Seventy-two uh to a multi-use trail, and that's caused some heartache. Um, but we've accomplished a lot of good. Uh also, last year, we built the trail around Coleman Park and ho- hosted a local race. Uh I'm also a second-year coach for the Lebanon Valley Mountain Bike Team. And uh want want to let you know what a cool thing we have going on there, where we're uh blending the kids between Lebanon City and Cedar Crest onto one team. Uh we have thirty-three kids on that team. Uh we practice at South Hill Park, Coleman Park, uh and on Saturdays through Bear Barrel, where we ride up the rail trail and cross over into Governor Dick. Uh last night, we had a race and three races, and Lebanon Valley Kids won all three races against York, Danville, and Sasquatch. Uh so it's a really cool thing. One real quick personal aside, I traveled the world mountain bike, uh going back to Europe this year, second year in a row. And I choose to live in Greece. Uh what we have on the back of that sheet is a lot of phenomenal things going on between Swatera Creek, the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail that's connecting all these parks and Governor Dick. We really have a great thing going on here, and I want to thank you all for your support through all these projects. If I was to ask for one thing off of all this, it's to continue to support multi-use trails and bike lanes. I've been hit three times. I commute to work in North Lebanon. I've been hit twice on more uh Eighth Street. So make it safer for us on the roads. Uh give us more places to go. Uh Rocky Creek. There's trails through there. We could build more trails under Samba uh that are safe and sustainable. So think about it. If you build it, we will come. The 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 tourism comes. And right now with the rail trail connecting Coleman, Swatera, and Governor Dick, you're all building something on one another.
Yep.
So thank you.
That's a sound investment. All right, Tim, thank you. All right, we're we're the rest of the team.
They're in the hallway.
Oh, good, okay. Uh do that. Do you mind if we if we do the team so that. Come on in. So just come in and make yourselves comfortable if these three seats are available. Just so everyone knows, uh, this is a special occasion. These uh folks are from North Lebanon. They'll introduce themselves, but they. Came in third in the state, and so we felt that it was uh worthy of uh a couple of minutes with us and 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 with the media here to uh. Thank them for the dedication and their um athleticism in in coming in third in the, in the entire state. So uh. Who's speaking on behalf is Brad?
That's me.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure. I I can give you, you know, a little brief synopsis of our summer. Um. These guys, we started right after school got out, and we had, we had about two weeks to get them ready for the district tournament. And so we put in three, four hours a day for two weeks. We called it training camp. Um, and then we had our district tournament up in Mechanicsburg. Uh, we won, we won that. Uh, didn't lose a game that's one, we won that one. And then we had another, what, what we said about a week? We got a week off till we started sections, which was up in Holliesburg. Um, and if any of you paid attention to Little League, uh Holliesburg was the team last year that went all the way to, they were number four in the country. Um, so we had the opportunity to play them uh and beat them in the championship game five to one, which was, which was real exciting for us. It was the first time ever. That our league has won uh the section title. Uh, last year, we, last year, we got our first ever section win. This year, we actually won the section championships. That was, that was a lot of fun. Um, and then we had another little bit of time to prepare for states. And states was down in Newtown Square outside of Philadelphia. Um. We won our first two games down there. Real exciting. Uh, the first game was a one-nothing. When the second game, we actually walked off. My guy Rory here had a game-winning hit in the bottom of the last inning. Um, and what was really cool about that was the Philly Fanatic was there, and all the kids got to celebrate with Fanatic, and that was really, that was really. So, um, so and then as quickly as you you feel like you get there. Yeah, that, that's how quick you kind of end it first, you know, it's a double elimination tournament. We lost our next two games. We got to play the current team that's in Williamsport. Media, Little League, who lost last night, actually, their first game. But we got beat by them, and then we got beat by a team that we had just walked off. I just talked about who walked off. We lost them too. So um it ended quick in two days, but it was a heck of a ride, and and uh I think these kids will, they'll never forget it. Uh, so.
Well, thanks for being here, and let's get more on to the part. And we do have certificates for everyone. I don't know that we should distribute them because I think they'll survive better this way. To get to their parents, but uh to be framed, but we do, uh, there's certificates of congratulations from the three county commissioners. And from a grateful county for representing us so well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say thank you all for coming in. What a great turnout. So proud of you guys. When, when we, when I see, you know. Remember Jamie who went on to the Olympics. When I see people going on to states and things like that, it's like so exciting. Thank you for coming in and letting us have this opportunity to meet you all. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. I'll be open. Congratulations, fellas.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Very well done. She was on a call with the. Yeah, and it's like a labor force. Um, we get the money from governor, from governor, distributed from one source to develop. Daniel, Jamie, and this is not a deal. I said, this was really great. It was one of the best meetings. What is, what is the age of the boys?
It's, they're all twelves. We, we did have two eleven-year-olds. It's such a eleven's plan.
It's staring right at me. That's creepy. Are their eyes on that side?
So if there's, if you have two of those things, then the owls have to be between each other. And then it can see other layers. So you can have multiple owls in a room. The room is bigger.
Yeah.
This covers.
I think you need to put the owl on a tripod right in the middle.
And that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So we're experimenting. Testing that out. I think they must have had a met conference.
Right, Bob Hamon, yeah. Because their owls are gonna be all built for it.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, you said hand sanitizer, touching all these toys.
Yeah, well, I said, I, I better clean up a little bit here.
They're actually probably cleaner than anything else.
I'm just thinking about their personal hygiene.
All right, anybody else? Uh, Jamie's back. All right, uh, Michael, if you'd like to introduce yourself and then uh.
Any Michael Froger's out in the township, that's gonna be a tough act to follow.
Okay, well, if you choose not to, that's okay.
I actually have two sets of comments, totally unrelated. Um, the first I wasn't gonna make until I heard Ms. Wheeler speak, but I was here yesterday as well at the, at the Governor Dick uh presentation. And I would again like to encourage the commissioners to consider a second opinion on the stewardship plan. Um, that the, that the trustees are following, and I would also like to encourage the commissioners to consider. Uh, hosting a community conversation about Governor Dick. Um, to invite not only the board, not only the friends of Governor Dick, but the larger community to have a conversation about Governor Dick. Uh, why people feel it's valuable and the best way, the best path moving forward. A little disappointing yesterday that it was a one-way con, it was a one-way presentation. I would have liked to have seen more of a dialogue between the friends and, and maybe that can happen in the future.
Well, it was meant to be a response to what they had asked us to come back with. So that's why it was, it was primarily one-way. But we did have some comments. It was primarily meant to respond to the.
Right.
So, okay.
But, but I, but I would like to, it would, I think it would be very fruitful to see a dialogue and a conversation between publicly. Publicly held between the, between these groups. Um, that's one set.
I thought that was two. Okay, but go ahead.
That's, that's, that's comment number one. Comment number two has to do with building on the comments I made yesterday at the prison board. Um, I want to commend the commissioners for the new website. I think it is much better than the old website. Um, it's much cleaner, easier to navigate, but as Commissioner Liv said yesterday in the prison board, there are still some holes and some gaps that need to be filled. And I think one of those holes and gaps has to do with the minutes of these meetings, of the commissioners' meetings. They're not accessible on, on the county website. Uh, nor are the YouTube videos. Presumably, this, this meeting is being recorded and gonna be posted on YouTube. But on the agenda, there's a little, there's a little tiny symbol in the, in the lower left corner that says YouTube. It is live link. You click on that, and it goes just to generic YouTube. Um, so it would be nice to have a, you know, a you, a, a link to the commissioner's YouTube channel that has, you know, well organized in chronological sequence. All of the meetings that, so that those who are not able to attend, who are at work or otherwise, you know, not able to come. Would be able to view and 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 engage with the commissioner's meeting.
Mike, I did look into that because I had sent it to IT because we have been putting them on there since COVID.
Yeah.
Um, it was on there, but Thomas from IT put it on the wrong date. He actually put it on last month's meeting date. When you click on that calendar and you go where it says prison board, you click on it, it opens up and there is, it's highlighted. It says agenda. If it's in blue.
Right.
Click on that, the whole packet comes up of everything that everybody has.
And, and so that, that's.
So it was on there, but it was, he put it on last month's date instead of.
And mistakes happen, sure. And, and here I'm talking about how the commit, not as much the prison board meeting, uh, but the commissioner meeting. Um, so I know bugs need to be worked out, and I, and I hope and I'm sure that the commissioner will work on them.
And, and again, Dawn is working on all of this with IT. Previously, she made all of those posts and did us an exceptional job. Right now, you have to go through a ticket, and they're inundated from all our departments till they get the final quirks worked out. But it is, you know, they're doing a stellar job. They really are. I know there's some lacking. But you do have multiple sources for the information.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go back to the agenda and the approval of the minutes. Of our workshop from August first and our meeting of August third.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sis.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved the minutes as we have received them. Any additions, additions, or corrections?
Oh, under um the street lighting, it doesn't me- mention improving safety, and that was the impetus. To do that on page ninety-four, well, for Monument Park. The impetus to look into those street lights was public safety. If you don't mind, please. I'm sorry, Dawn. I, it was so hectic this morning. I forgot.
Should be asking the board. I mean, do they want to add that in there?
I have no objection.
Thank you. I thought it was an important point.
That uh adjustment, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Now, our treasurer, this is moved.
Okay. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We had receipts of two million five hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. That brought us to a total cash of four million seven hundred and forty-three thousand seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents. We had expenditures this week of four million eighty thousand six hundred and eight dollars and sixty-one cents. The tax claim is forty thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Leaving us at seven hundred twenty-two thousand eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve the uh treasurer's report subject to audit.
Second. And we have a motion in the second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. You thought we forgot about you, didn't you? I knew you wouldn't.
Michelle Snably, Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations, Christina Oliveras, these were for one and children in youth. Removal effective August seventh, Mary Griffith, Court Officer in Courts resignation effective August twenty-fifth. Malago Zedic, Admin Assistant in District Attorney's Office, resignation effective August eighteenth. Ashley Dunkelberger, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective July fifteenth. Adam Clay, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective August fifteenth. Scott Richmond, Deputy Warden of Operations at the Jail, resignation effective September first. Connor Andrek, Probation Officer One in Probation Services, resignation effective August seventeenth. Annika Evans, Office Support One and Recorder of Deeds, resignation effective August ninth. James Calder, Casual and Part-Time Office Support One in the Sheriff's Office, resignation effective September first.
Make a motion to approve their resignations and terminations.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Carly Ebersol at the Renova Center, twelve-week leave of absence, all unpaid, effective August twenty-ninth with a return date of November twenty-first.
Make a motion to approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second, it's to move it in second that we approve that leave. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, I have a motion. To approve entering into a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Four-Two-Nine involving the Lebanon County Social Services Agency. Represented employees at the Area Agency on Aging, M H I D E I, Drug and Alcohol, and Children in Youth Services. For the term of August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Highlights of the collective bargaining agreement include wage increases of three dollars per hour effective September third, two thousand twenty-three. For the remainder of twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four. And four percent for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, and two thousand twenty-seven. Increase work week from thirty-seven point five hours per week to forty hours per week. Increase on-call compensation for children in youth employees. Increase travel expenses to ten dollars, sixteen dollars, and twenty dollars. Increase and sick leave buyback rate to twenty dollars per day with a decrease in maximum allowable sick days permitted to roll over at the end of the year. Increase in medical insurance deductibles to a thousand, two thousand, with working spousal carve-out. Increase in helix monthly payment from two hundred dollars per month to two hundred and fifty dollars per month. Vacation time increase to the accrual rate for years one through four of employment from ten days to twelve days per year. Modifications to leave of absence and family medical leave act policies and other non-a, non-economic revisions to several articles.
Make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
It's removed in second that we approved that collective bargaining agreement. And uh, thanks to the team that worked on it to get it to this point. Um, this is. Very difficult environment to be negotiating, but uh we appreciate the, the hard work that I'm into getting this contract.
I, I would also like to say congratulations, Michelle, and of course, our labor attorney uh for doing a good job for us. Thank you.
Yes, I think it's important to make a comment here about some of the wages uh in the economics of this, the. Bargaining units, as you all recall, were uh not part of the salary study implementation, so on. Because while in the midst of the contract, we don't, we can't change those numbers. So those were all non-union. Employees that were part of that implementation, which is now, I think, over a year ago, at least. Um, so these contracts, well, we're, we're, we're catching up to the market. We're also catching up to some of the stuff that we're done for the. For the non-union while they had to uh basically sit out and wait for their contract. So just wanted to mention that.
Um, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
Ruth Snyder, Promotion from Admin Case Manager Two at Area Agency on Aging to Aging Care Manager Two Supervisor Two. At Area Agency on Aging at the rate of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents by weekly effective August twenty-first. Angela Danfulech, Transfer from Social Services Aid and Children in Youth to Adult Abuse Investigator in Area Agency on Aging. At the rate of one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents by weekly effective August twenty-first. Robin Booper, Promotion from Fiscal Assistant in Children in Youth to Fiscal Technician in Children in Youth at the rate of one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and nineteen cents. By weekly effective August twenty-first. Lindsay Moore, Promotion from Child Abuse Investigator in Children Youth to Casework Supervisor One in Children in Youth at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty eight cents. By weekly effective August twenty first.
Make a motion to approve the changes of status, transfers and promotions as presented.
Second. It's removed in second, any questions regarding those transactions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve a request from District Attorney Pierre Haskraft. To create an additional union detective position within the Detective's Bureau effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion, um, but I would like to comment.
Certainly.
I, I found that, uh, the request was, uh, unusual because it's outside of the budget cycle. I also, um. Found it unusual because, uh, we were told some things with the city that turned out not to be the case. Yesterday, we interviewed the mayor and the chief. And we're given a litany of, uh. Accu- accuracies on, uh. For instance.
Security.
Okay, um. The bottom line is, uh. The chief is doing the administrative work and they have all of the detectives in the field. So I think that we're, um. Doing okay and it's not a a mandatory. Position, I mean, the county does not have to fund detectives, we choose to fund detectives. But to expand the force. Um, I don't, I'm not convinced that this will not let up after the seven homicides. I think that, um. This will go back to normal and it's just a fluke and so therefore I just think it's premature. To request an additional position.
Michael, do you have any comments? I I have also. I mean, I think, uh, yeah, uh. Based on recommendations from the District Attorney and I believe our staff currently are overwhelmed. Uh, with a lot of work with the, not just the volume, but the, the, uh. The, uh, severity of the crimes which require a lot more work and the interest of public safety. Uh, I am leaning towards, uh, uh, approving this petition for now.
I, I too, um, we have a a very strong law and order District Attorney. And to second guess her and 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 look out into the future and say, I think everything's going to be better. I I can't count on that. Um, I have to go with what the recommendation is and it was not for one position, it was for two. Uh, there's a second one being requested, uh, after in the first quarter of next year. So this is the one that I felt if if she needs it right now and we are stewards of the taxpayer. Uh, we are, uh, we understand that, but we also are stewards of their safety. So we, uh, this is one of those that I felt was an exception worth granting and so I too would be supporting it. But I just wanted to e- express why, uh, every, so everyone would understand why we're making this exception prior to the budget cycle.
But you know, there were details like they even, the city even took back over child line for age thirteen and up. So at that time, not too terribly long ago, the District Attorney didn't have enough work for her detectives. So I can say this is going to pass and I think it's premature, it's out of the budget cycle and it's not appropriate at this time.
Any other comments or questions regarding the motion? Yes.
So you said, uh, so she is overall requesting two positions, the second one to be within the budget cycle next year?
Yes.
Okay.
To be considered.
To be considered, yes.
So that one will be handled totally separately, but this one was, uh, you know, this was more vital to, uh. Uh, challenges right now, so.
What is the complement of county detectives?
We have, we have three, uh, no, oh, us, I'm obviously thinking we were talking about the city, I'm sorry. Um, because the city has three in the field and two administrative, but the chief is doing administrative work.
In the city?
Mm-hmm.
No, but so. This county detective that is being requested is would be on the county payroll, not the city.
Oh, correct.
And and so how many detectives are on the county payroll? Inclusive of the chief county?
Oh, it, I believe so. I definitely double check that.
Five with the G. Five.
I'm sure.
We'll have to check that. Okay. And you said it was a union position? Is that correct?
Yep.
What's that, what's that, uh, salary that that person started?
It'd be after the salary, salary is dictated by the.
CBA, yeah, I'm not sure.
And it's a lowest grade, lowest grade or is it a higher grade? The one that's being requested.
That all depends on whether it's submitted. This isn't for an individual, this is for a position.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, you have to be determined. Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. I oppose.
Aye.
Okay, it's a split throat, uh, two to one in favor, so that that position will be adopted.
Buildings and grounds would like to hire Nathan Hauser as a maintenance mechanic at the rate of one thousand four hundred and forty one dollars and sixty two cents. By weekly effective August twenty first. Children and youth would like to hire Debbie Shearer as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand two hundred and thirty nine dollars and fifty two cents. By weekly effective August twenty first. President Judge Tewok would like to hire April Connor Core as an admin assistant one at the rate of one thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars and fifty two cents. By weekly effective August twenty first. Uh, the Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following six full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of twenty one dollars and eighty four cents. Per hour, all effective August twenty eighth, and that is Dylan Gold, Jeremiah Cruz, Elijah Freeman, William Chris Patton, Aaron Huslander. And Kelly Lutz. President Judge Tewok would like to hire Gabriel Dejerk as a probation officer one at the rate of one thousand six hundred and seventy eight dollars and nine cents. By weekly effective August twenty first. And the Public Defender's I Office would like to hire Michael T F Chief as an Assistant Public Defender One. At the rate of two thousand five hundred and thirty one dollars and two cents by weekly effective August twenty eighth.
Make a motion to approve the personnel transactions as presented.
Second, it's removed in second that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I, those same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, if there are no question.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approve those salary board assignments. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Hey. You have some extra time to prepare your remarks, so. Sorry, should be really good. Brett, if you wanted to, uh, kick it off or introduce your colleagues.
That's okay. That's fine. So, uh, my name's Brett Holland, I'm with Stiefel and, uh, um, Sonia Gross is, uh, a business partner on the far end there. Uh, Mike apologized, he's not able to make it today, there was some, uh, a friend of his had, uh, some family issues that he's trying to. Uh, be with today, but we have Kevin Cron from Washington Crossing, that's a senior portfolio manager, you all have seen him before. Um, they manage about fifteen percent of the overall portfolio, what they represent, so. Just to be respectful of time, we'll get started if that's okay, uh, keep things moving for you all. So if you go to page four. Of eleven is the same report that we've, uh, used in the past. And this is ending, uh, the quarter of, uh, June thirty, it's just like it is in the top left-hand side, now where you have different return periods. So again, ending June thirtieth and Sonia will have more up-to-date numbers after that. But the current period, uh, for, uh, the current period being, um. Uh, a quarterly period, uh, their last quarter, the, uh, uh, portfolio was up four point three four percent. You see that underneath there. Then the year-to-date number, and this is through June, was nine point zero three. Percent, and then what they're calling an inception date, which is just like a one-year period, it was up ten point nine two percent. And then, uh, going back to two thousand seven, which is the furthest point we go back, it was up five point nine six percent, that's per year is what that is. Um, the, I'm just going to focus on the year-to-date number for just a moment if I could there, so. Year-to-date number in January, it started with one hundred and twenty-three million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And during that time, uh, there's been between deposits and withdrawals, um, there's a, a, a showing a, the, a withdrawal of about two point two million. Um, that's again, your art payment went in and of course that has come out with withdrawals as well. So you had eleven million dollars worth of appreciation and then the ending value at the end of, uh, June was one hundred and thirty-two million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Sick of those, that may not, no, explain the art payment or at least what they are.
Yeah, so that's, uh, May eighteenth, um, the county puts that in on behalf of the, uh. Uh, retirees is what it is, um, that amount, I, I'm happy to share that, if you'd like to share that, is, uh, three million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Six hundred and forty thousand, I'm off, let me know there, so, but that's the amount, so that goes in on behalf of the, uh. Pensionees as well, and that's an important thing, um. That that's been the case for quite a number of years, that was not always the case, but that's been the case for the last, uh, many enough years. Yeah, oh yes, yes, for the last ten years at least, yes. So, um, that art payment is, it's an investment into the retirees. Um, and then, uh, moving around on the bottom right-hand side of the page. There's a pie tray, I just want to point something out here and I probably have not said this before and I need to just mention this real quick if I could. It's showing cash equivalents, which is kind of like a money market of zero percent. Equities of sixty-six percent. Fixed income, which is your bonds of twenty-eight percent. And then alternative investments, which is the real estate investment trust, what we call REITs of six percent. And the, I just want to mention one thing, this, this is, um, a reflection of how these, uh, different pieces of your pie are managed, if that makes sense. Currently, right now, there's about five and a half percent that's in the money market, uh, that's not necessarily showing on this chart. So there is a cash balance in there, that's what we pull from to pay the pension, uh, pensionees as well. Um, so sometimes I think that can be a little confusing, I don't know if I pointed that out before or not. Um, and then I'm going to move to page, uh, six, if you would, please. Um, page six of eleven. And if you see it cross over towards the right, it'd be a one, three, five and ten-year period, I'll look kind of the bottom line. So over the last one-year period, um, it's showing a return of ten point nine two percent. Uh, three-year period of seven point one seven. Five-year period of six point four nine percent. And then the ten period, excuse me, ten-year period of six point six seven percent.
And the assumption is seven two five?
Yes, seven twenty-five. So. Um, any questions with any of that at all? With that, and Sonia will give you a kind of up-to-date as of just a day or so ago, kind of where we're at.
So the current account value as of August fifteenth is one hundred twenty-nine million, nine hundred forty-one thousand, three sixty-four. With an unaudited year-to-date return of eight point one percent.
More like it.
The asset allocation remains unchanged as of the second quarter. And it remains within the investment policy that was approved.
Kevin has some comments he'd like to. Thank you for having me, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner spending time.
Just introduce yourself again.
Kevin Cron, um, Senior Portfolio Manager with Washington Crossing Advisors, we manage. The Victory Portfolio, which is a part of the overall pension assets. What I'd like to share with you today is just some of the observations that we've made as managers of a portion of the portfolio over the last year. In terms of what, what's changed, it just seems, seems like it was just a. Short while ago that I was here and I think it was in the middle of last year, memory serves. And where we were headed last year was a world of extremely high inflation, much higher interest rates. And the bond market had its worst year in recorded history last year. So all of this set the stage for this year. When we came into two thousand twenty-three. What we saw was a tremendous amount of pessimism. We looked at a Bloomberg survey in January of this year. We saw that there was, that when you surveyed the, uh, various strategies and strategists and economists out there. You couldn't, it was very hard to find anybody to express a bullish point of view after the drubbing that markets took last year. So the expectation was that we would be in recession by now. The popular expectation was that we would endure continued bear market. And even the IMF. Warned that the worst was yet to come, so there was a lot of dark clouds hanging over the scene as we came into the year.
Amen.
I am, yes, the international one, yes, sorry. Um, so, o- overall, there was just a lot of pessimism as we came into the year. But as we came into the, into the first few months of the year, some of those clouds started to part ways. Uh, and mu- a large portion of that had to do with the idea that inflation would roll over. The Fed had indeed raised interest rates significantly, the money supply was contracting, banks were starting to tighten up on credit. And as, and as we watched the inflation data come in month by month by month. While it's still high, the momentum started to roll over, so. The rate of increase in the Consumer Price Index started to come down from nine percent to eight percent, seven percent. And the market took some solace from that. Essentially looking forward, expecting the Fed, who is now currently standing fully on the brake pedal of the proverbial economic car. That the Fed would begin to ease their foot off the, off the brake this year. Provide some relief and allow the economy to continue to expand, which would be Nirvana. Because in that situation, you could have stocks perform better. You have bond, uh, prices that have already come down, interest rates that have moved up. So pension investor, for example, for the first time in over a decade. Is now able to earn a return on cash, is able to earn a higher return on bonds. Uh, just for the record, if you look at what the expectation is for cash returns over the next year or so priced into the market, it's around about five percent. If I came here five years ago and said you can get five percent in cash, I would be laughed, laughed out of the room because that wasn't possible. That wasn't where we were five years ago and it, almost everyone investing at that time was lamenting. The absence of interest rates, negative interest rates in some parts around the world as. A historic aberration, something that never should have happened but did, and pension investors had to suffer the consequences of no rate of interest. That is now completely fully reversed and with a five percent expectation on and on just simply cash investments. Obviously, the expected return for all fixed income portfolios is now higher. So as we come into, come through the middle part of the year, uh, the attitude shifted from extreme pessimism about the economy. To one that was somewhat better. Who benefited from that? Well, the large-cap growth companies who took significant declines last year. Suddenly found new buyers. If you look at the, the largest co- growth companies, many of them are technology companies, they have, they have what are called, uh. They represent a very, very large portion of the market now because they're so valuable. They're all the household names that we all know. Uh, Apple, Google, companies like that. Um, those companies have had a stellar recovery after losing thirty, forty, fifty percent of their value last year. Now here we are in the middle of the year and we published a piece at Washington Crossing Advisors recently, it's available on our website. That addresses conflicting signs. We're at another moment where we have some, we have some headwinds. For example, although the economy has come back, although business spending looks reasonably good, although the unemployment rate is relatively low. We are starting to see some signs that suggest caution. The simplest one is just what I, what I just said. That in the market today, there is a five percent return available in holding cash, there are higher returns available just by simply owning a bond. And stock market is up and multiples on stocks are now somewhat expensive, particularly in some quarters of the market. So therefore, when you look ahead. The, the waters could very easily become more choppy for stock investments as we move forward from here. Because it's, because the returns on cash are now higher and they compete with the returns available in the equity markets. So this is no time in our judgment of Washington Crossing to let down our guard. How do you deal with this for the next five or ten years? You focus on our watchword, which is quality, which is often a marketing word, but to us it means three things. How do you deal with this for the next five or ten years? You focus on our watchword, which is quality, which is often a marketing word, but to us, it means three things. You own quality assets. What does that mean? Assets that generate high returns when you look at the profits that the companies generate relative to the assets that they employ, number one. Number two, you look for businesses that have very low debt in the capital structure, so that if there is a setback in their business, these, you don't end up owning a whole bunch of indebted companies that fail. Lastly, you play, place a premium on consistency over flashy growth. If you do those three things, we think you own quality. We think you're going to tend to do better, especially when times get rocky. And in our experience, the way that we have, the way that we have made progress in our style of investing over the years has been like the tortoise and the hare. We have been better paid, able at making progress when the, when, by moving slower through a cycle, more deliberately, but looking for consistency, looking for profitability, looking for companies with very good balance sheets, and if we can buy those companies at reasonable prices, our theory is that over time, the portfolio should generate a better return. And then secondly, I'll close with this. It's very important that we not put the cart before the horse. Every business generates value by generating cash flows to its owners, who in this case are the beneficiaries of the pension dollars that you've entrusted us to invest. How do those businesses grow in value? They grow in value by bringing more business in the front door. It's not ultimately about what those businesses pay in terms of dividends. That's what accountants would call a use of cash. And you have businesses that have greater sources of cash to them. Over time, and those, those, that cash grows, then what's going to happen is that business should become more valuable as ti, as time passes. So ultimately, the name of the game for us is to find companies that are profitable, that are plowing back into their own business, that are growing, that we can buy at a reasonable price. And two things should happen. We should be able to generate attractive risk-adjusted returns, which I think we have done. We know that we're going to tend to lag in rambunctious poll markets, where you have a tremendous amount of enthusiasm in the market. We know that with great certainty. We also know, or we, we have experienced that when markets come under pressure, this style tends to hold up better. So what we hope to do over time is be prudent managers of your money, and what we look to do is generate consistent returns that stay in there when markets are rising, and that provides some protection when markets are under pressure. I think we, I think we've done that. And this year, with the portfolio performing as it has, I think we've done, we've demonstrated that once again.
Thank you. Any questions for Kevin or for Sonia or Brett?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had me back at Nirvana, so I hadn't heard that word used in this presentation prior.
Just wait, if I may, make one comment. Mike and I were talking about this and Sonia before we got here over the last couple of months. So we've been, should say couple of months, we've been kind of watching Royce Investment, which is one of the small company stock investments that you all have. And I'll kind of say it's on our watch list right now. So we might be talking with you in the future about looking at something different. It's not a large percentage. It makes up about three point six percent of the overall portfolio, but that's been kind of on our watch list. So just to kind of mention that to you ahead of time.
Right. Appreciate you coming in, Kevin. Thank you for the updates and being part of our fifteen percent of the picture. That's a big part.
So it means a lot to us at Washington Crossing. We're very grateful for County work. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Series of things here to present to you first, change orders for the emergency services center that I found out has submitted, actually, Ned Pelger from Pelger Engineering Construction submitting. I think you've been provided with the list. I'll walk through them here briefly if you would like. First one being number forty-four would be to add backer rod behind the metal wall panels between the windows. This change order amounts in one thousand nine twenty-nine and is recommended for approval. Second one I have is add riverstone to the edging around the inlets of the courtyard to improve maintenance by keeping mulch from running into the storm sewer inlets. That change order is one thousand three fifty-one. A change to the base paving and final paving, which is scheduled to happen, I think, in the end of September, the final paving, is for asphalt index increase, the market increase of five hundred, from five hundred and forty-five dollars per liquid ton to five ninety-three per liquid ton for the units extrapolating the amounts across all of the units that will be, they're being purchased. That change order amounts five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Adding a concrete sidewalk from the curb to the tower shed, one thousand nine seventeen. Raising the stormwater inlets in the courtyard to make safer walking area. The original design, when, when it was, once it was seen in the field, did not work. So the inlets were too low, the pitch in the courtyard was too steep. So they're raising the height of the, of the inlet so that it's not as much of a slope, but it'll still provide plenty, plenty of runoff. The size of the inlets are, are a little overdesigned so that there's not any water retained there. But that change order is five thousand one fifty for the raising of the stormwater inlet heights, and the last being a door hardware for, to approve operational flow. And this change orders at one thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand six fifty-four.
The switchgear on the list.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Switchgear update. Just got an email the other day. That's been holding us. That's been our big worry. Ned Pelger, our oversight construction, has a photograph of the switchgear, which arrived at the facility that's doing the final testing. So he sent us all the photographs. It just looks suspiciously like our switchgear. This is good news. So yeah, we seem to be still behind a little because of the switchgear, but we know where it is. We know it's.
Makes quite a presence when you drive by. So that's, it's really, yeah.
Make a motion for the eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars in changes.
Let's move to secondary with those changes. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
Next, I have a resolution.
That's well within our.
Yes, yes, yes. There was a, yeah, we're well within what we had anticipated in terms of leaving, you know, leaving a contingency or any type of project of this size. You know, you're going to run into something, but we're really in good shape then. Next, I have resolution eight seventeen twenty-three. This is for the appointment and continued participation in the Workforce Investment Board through the South Central Local Electoral Officials, which is an entity that governs South Central Workforce Investment Board, known as SCPA Works, and is a pass-through entity that operates, that's when you career-linked locations and provides other workforce development activities within the area. This resolution would renew our commitment, which includes the, is inclusive of Adams, Cumberland, Dauphin, Franklin, Juniata, Lebanon, Perry, and York Counties, and would formally name Fisher Letts as the designate representative.
I don't think I should second it if I'm the appointee, shouldn't I?
You're not deriving any community benefit. We don't believe.
Second, I can say. No, the benefit was learning about the owl. I enjoyed that.
Hey, any questions regarding the motion, resolution? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
Next, I have two reports on behalf of the the election office. Sean is at his annual conference in Lancaster for the second half of this week. So he asked if this could be presented on his behalf. They are both reports for the Election Integrity Grant Program, which is a state grant funding that the county is now receiving from the state. These are for the general election of two thousand and twenty-two and the primary election of two thousand and twenty-three. And I believe you have copies in front of you. The post-election report for two thousand and twenty-two is the amount of having used fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and two cents for the printing of in-person and mail-in ballots, materials to train poll workers, secure preparation of the voting equipment, and for compensation of temporary workers who process voter registration applications. Take these separately if you don't mind. So we have it in minutes that way.
Sure.
My second emotion, but I do have a question. Why would we not recoup payment of staff at polling places on Election Day? Number seven, it has the zero.
I'm not sure there was enough money in the grant to, to cover everything that we did. And that's typically a general fund expense. It's always budgeted in, so.
I, I just thought if we didn't spend the whole thing, that we could have done more.
Yeah, we're not leaving anything.
It's all, it's all there. Okay, that was my real question. Thank you.
Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
And the second one is for the primary election of two thousand and twenty-three. This is a much larger amount because we were able to secure funds to purchase the processing machine, which was used for computation and counting of ballots, high-speed counting of ballots. So this one for primary election two thousand and twenty-three is at the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars, ninety-four cents to pay canvassing activities, maintenance activities, including mailings, and equipment to process mail-in ballots, printing ballots, and delivery of equipment.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's moved and second, that we leave this expenditure. Any questions?
It's a post-election report. So this isn't after the fact, just wrapping it up with the state.
All the chair, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
Okay, so I have two applications for hotel tax grant funds. The first one is for the Hilltop Playground Association. And they are requesting, they have a total project cost of eight thousand, two hundred dollars. They are requesting seven thousand, five hundred dollars. However, if you do the math of the twenty-five percent that you require, if they're providing twenty-five percent of the eighty-two hundred, the grant, seventy-five percent of the grant of the amount would be six thousand, one fifty. They are having their annual Hilltop Playground Car Show, and also October, that's on September seventeenth, and then the Oktoberfest is on October twenty-first. And in their narrative, if you had a chance to look at it, they have a band, a poker band coming from Scranton, who will be staying in local hotels. They have a car show where they have participants from as far away as New Jersey.
Make a motion for the six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, which would honor their obligation, and also what they say they intended to do to match the twenty-five percent.
Second. We looked at second, that we, if we revised the amount, as the location, it's two events. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
And the next is for the Susquehanna Valley Showdown to be held at the Lebanon Valley Acquisition Center and Fairgrounds. For two thousand and twenty-four, it's a two-day event to be held in June of two thousand and twenty-four at the Expo Center, offering classes for lambs, goats, and swine, and a skillathon and showmanship contest. This draws youth livestock exhibitors from all along the East Coast. And pistons will obviously need hotel rooms within the county and enjoy the local eateries in the, in the Expo Center. So their total project cost for this event is eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. They're asking for the seventy-five hundred dollars.
Great.
Make a motion to approve that for you.
I'll second the motion, but I'd also like to prove that, point out that in their overall budget, they're charging a thousand, forty dollars to rent pens that I think we purchased at the expo. And also, they have hotel rooms in their budget, but because they are contributing more than twenty-five percent, that's, I'm not going to hold it against them, but it's misleading. I don't want others to think they can do that. That's not what we fund. If it would be with, in their twenty-five percent. Or.
Any other comments?
I think the pen rentals are from the expo.
Yeah, but we bought them for the expo.
Well, they're renting them from the expo. I understand that, but they're, the expo's deriving income from the rental.
But we're renting something we purchased, which doesn't make sense to me.
Anything else, June? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
Next, I have disabled veteran exemption requests for Kane Oswald of Village Circle Homira, Claude Gregory of Locust Grove Park, Granville, Gillian Poirot of Bayberry Court, Myerstown, Albert Migliaccio of East Lehman Street, Lebanon, and Larry Hartman of Main Street, Richland.
Second.
Second, that we prove those exemptions from property tax, disabled veterans. Questions or comments? Here, you don't know in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
And an agreement between the county and the London Transit for M A T P, Medical Assistance Transportation Program, Community Action Partnerships, where the re-containing contract is something that annually you utilize London Transit for certain transports for eligible clients.
Make a motion to approve the M A T P program.
It's been moved in second that we approved that contract. Any questions? You're not in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
And finally, a nomination for the Community Action Partnership Advisory Board for Nicole M. Gray, who is the executive director of the Community Health Council, Lebanon. And if approved, her term would end December of two thousand and twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve Nicole.
It's moved and second that we approved Nicole Mallory Gray for this position. Any questions regarding this? Some, not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post the same sign somewhere.
Follow-up on the personnel requests. Complement of detectives is five, including the chief in the district attorney's office.
Thank you.
Currently, now, now six with the approval. And a detective, according to the collective bargaining agreement, with detectives, step one is sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars.
Anything else from the floor?
Yeah, appeals this afternoon. And they can.
No, I think that was.
Oh, okay. I would see that.
They put it back on the agenda, so I thought it was back on.
I wasn't counting on it.
I kept looking at the clock.
Yes, assessment hearings are for the, yeah. So, and nothing else? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Thank you for your attendance and your input.